Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the town planner for Farmington. I will start with a roll call of our commission members and then turn it over to the chair. Matthew Bandle.
Here.
Robert Canto.
Here.
Rogia Afshar.
Here.
David St. Germain.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
And our alternates Bruce Polsky.
Here.
Mike Tucci.
Here.
And Kyla Zimmerman. I'm not seeing. Well, Kyla is absent this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, it's all yours.
All right. Thanks very much, Shannon. Welcome, everybody, to the July 8th Town Plan and Zoning Committee meeting. We've got a few very quick new business items to get through and then a few public hearings. And we appreciate those of you from the public that came out for the public hearings tonight. But we're going to start off with Liz reading the public notice for us.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, July 8, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following application. Christopher Stevenson, application for special permit for accessory structure in excess of 700 square feet and accessory structure greater than 30% of the principal residential building at 26 Skyline Drive in our 20 zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in the hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at 1 Mount Heath Drive, Town Hall, Council, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's webpage. A copy of this proposal is online, or you can get it by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 20th day of June, 2024, Town Planning, Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Liz. All right, on to new business. We've got all three of these items are going to get continued to July 22nd. So, simple motions to continue, please. So, number one, Architectural Building Services General Contractors LLC. Then we get a motion and a second to continue to the 22nd of July.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that to continue, is that the right word?
Yes, please.
Okay, to continue the application by Architectural Building Services General Contractors LLC, Palazzo Drive, request for five-year extension of re-subdivision approve, approval granted December 9, 2019.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, number two, Arnco Sign Company, Inc., for Wano Massa Lane.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the application by Arnco Sign Company, Incorporated, for Wano Massa Lane for a sign application to July 22nd.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And the third one, another Arnco Sign Company, this one at 362 Scott Swamp Road. All right, I'll make the motion.
We're sharing the wealth tonight.
Right? Going to postpone the Arnco Sign Company in 322, or 362 Scott Swamp Road until July 22nd.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. All right, right on to our public hearings. Promise that would be quick. So just a few sort of process-oriented things as we get into the into the public hearings. So, the way the process will work is we'll ask the applicant for each to present to the commission. Commissioners, then we'll each have an opportunity to ask questions. And then we'll open it up for public comment to those first in the room and then anybody, we may have people online as well. Once all the public comment has been provided, we'll ask the applicant to respond rather than going back and forth throughout the whole period. And then, just a couple of like small things that we ask, if you can keep your comments limited to five minutes. And if your comments echo those, maybe others have said it's okay to just say, I agree with what the previous person said. And that's really just to respect both your time and the commission's time. So, we're just trying to be a little expeditious about it. But honestly, we really appreciate public comment in these hearings, so we appreciate that you're all here. So, with those, that little business item out of the way, let's jump right into the first one, which is Christopher Stevenson, 26 Skyline Drive, application for special permit for accessory structure in excess of 700 square feet and accessory structure greater than 30% of the principal residential building in our 20 zone. That's a mouthful. Come right up, please.
Up to the podium.
Up to the podium, please. And state your name and address for us, please.
Hi, my name is Christopher Stevenson. I live at 26 Skyline Drive in Farmington.
Great.
Actually, put a proposal together to build a secondary garage on the property. If you're familiar with this area, my property backs up to the abandoned highway. And we have the off-ramp on the highway. So, we're, it's really kind of three-phased. The reason I'm doing this is, one, I'm a car collector. So, I want to put the cars in storage on my property where they're not out in the elements. Two, to kind of reduce some of the highway noise. And three, just to keep the wife happy, to have a clear driveway for her. So, I am proposing it's 26 feet wide by 36 feet deep. There won't be an additional driveway. It's actually going to be a GeoGrid driveway. So, it's going to be the GeoGrid that goes under the grass.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll turn it over to the commissioners. Matt?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. Thank you.
Bob? No, no questions. I'm glad you're doing the GeoGrid.
Thank you.
Well, I think there are a few items to consider from the, on the agenda, the right, Shannon? So, there's, there's one thing that the applicant shall show how access to the structure will be obtained. So, is that, did you cover that?
I did, yes. So, I don't know if they have access to the SharePoint that I uploaded the photos to. So, we have on the left side of our property where this would come through, we have a 10-foot gate.
Okay.
That we're able to access it.
And then there's a concern about, there's a shed that it needs to be demolished.
I apologize. Yes, that will come down.
That will come down. Okay. Yes, those two items were.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you so much for being here.
Absolutely.
Liz?
I'm just looking at the map. So, the, where the garage, the proposed garage would be. So, that back line, that back property, that's the abandoned highway or?
No, George Santos bought the property like, I don't know how many feet behind everybody's house that runs behind all the houses. And then the abandoned highway starts. So, I think he's got like 20 or 30 feet.
Oh, okay.
He rides like side-by-sides behind us on.
Oh, okay. Okay. Ah, there we go. To the maps. Thank you, Shannon. I appreciate, I'm just, I got a chance to drive by this, this afternoon.
Oh, okay. We are keeping it in line with the style of the house. So, we are doing a mid-century modern to match the house. I know it doesn't match the neighborhood, but it matches the house.
And I was curious about that.
Yes.
So, okay. And so, I noticed the, the gate that you were talking about. So, you're going to be able to come around
Correct.
in that way.
Yes.
Okay. Um. Oh, I'm just looking.
So, that's it there.
I see. Okay. So, that's the shed and that will come down and, okay. Okay. Uh, I, I guess that's my, those are my questions. So, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz.
Dave? Can you keep that up, Shannon?
Absolutely.
So, how are you getting your cars back there?
Um, I wish I had a good photo for you. So, on the, on the left side, we have a 10-foot gate there. It's not, there's, actually, it's not in that picture, but there's a fence there.
Okay. And then how are they, how are you getting to that point?
Um, there's actually a big section that I can go straight there. Because I drive my truck in my trailer. I parked the trailer back there in the backyard.
And where's this GeoGrid part?
Um, I can actually, I'll pull it up on my phone. It might be easier to see because I put photos on the SharePoint. Can I come up and share it, please?
So, that's all going to be GeoGrid there?
Yes. So, it's actually going to be like a classic base that goes on.
And it goes all the way to the road?
Yes.
Yeah. If you want anyone else to see.
Does anybody else want to see what he showed?
Sure.
Dave?
Let's just start here. Did you, did you share these?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have access. So, Mr. Stevenson, you'll have to share, you'll have to get those to us tomorrow so they can be entered into the record. I'm not sure what you're referring to, was the Garrett Daigle. I, okay.
So, the gate is right there. So, you wouldn't even see a driveway. It would just be under the grass.
So, you do a GeoGrid all the way to the road, not just garage pass? No, no, no. I thought it was from the fence back.
The garage?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
So, I guess that would lead me to a question about drainage. Is that something we've got to think about here?
So, with the absence of the hard-paved surface, then there's less concern from a driveway standpoint. From a roof, Mr. Seer and I may look at requiring some roof infiltrators at the time the building permit comes in. There's a little bit of a less concern because of the topography of the property. It does pitch back away from, from the driveway and not to either of the immediately adjoining neighbors. So, it'll depend on where the gutters and downspouts are, and we'll have to address that at the time of the building permit.
Okay. All right, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce?
Um, a couple of things. On your general notes.
Yes.
On the, on the plan, bullet point number nine says you intend to abide by the rules of the Town of Burlington. I'm sure there are lovely folks over there in their planning department. Have a look at it. But I would prefer that that would say Farmington. So, check your, your general notes. Bullet point number nine.
I noticed that, too.
You did?
Yeah. I forgot now. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even catch that. The architect, I can have them adjust that. Yeah.
That was a test to see if we were actually read it.
I didn't even read this. I apologize.
On that. But I guess my second question is, is the, the special permit you're looking for, the excesses that you want to do on an R20 zone are fairly significant. And I understand, you know, you have a car collection. But, you know, doing this would be a fairly significant change to that property in terms of, you know, what is typically an R20 zone. How, I mean, how many cars do you intend to store there? And what's the, the traffic going to be there? I mean, it's a fairly large structure that you're putting on, on a permanent basis to this property.
Agreed. Four cars. That I'm going to be putting in there.
And they're going to be end-to-end, side-by-side?
So, yeah, they're going to be in tandem, two in tandem.
Okay, understood. All right. Okay. You're good, Bruce?
I'm good. Okay, Mike?
When you're saying you, you collect, do you also tinker with the cars?
No, I like to kind of keep them original.
Okay.
Obviously, I, I work full-time as a corporate job.
Okay.
I don't have the mechanical skill set to do that.
Want to go over our noise ordinance, so it doesn't sound like.
Oh, understood.
We'd be doing any power tools or anything.
No.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Still Kyla? No Kyla? Just want to double-check.
Uh, I don't believe she's.
Okay.
No, sir.
Okay, just wanted to double-check. I don't think I have any questions at this point. So, at this time, if there's anybody that's in the room, we'll open up the public hearing at this point. If anybody in the room wants to comment for, or is opposed to this applicant, please step up to the podium. Bruce, while we're waiting, just for clarification, you said the garage was 26 by 32?
Uh, it's 26 by 36.
36.
Yes.
Shannon, do you want to check online?
If anyone has called in online to offer comment on the 26 Skyline Public Hearing, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Mr. Chair, there is a hand raised.
Okay.
So, Mar, if you, you should be able to unmute your microphone. I've got one hand raised. Mar, M-A-R, if you want to go ahead and unmute your microphone, you can offer comment. And now the hands down. Okay.
That was an oopsie. Okay.
Enter thought for a different application.
Yep, maybe an oopsie. Hit the wrong button. Happens.
If, yeah, if anyone else has called in regarding 26 Skyline, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Mr. Chair, you're all set.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Any other commissioners? Any other questions for Mr. Stevenson? Good? Okay, once I, because once I close the public hearing, that's it. No more questions, right?
Okay, well, I'll ask a question.
Hey, go for it.
Dangled that out.
Once we do, it's over.
In terms of having driven past today, yes, there is a wide variety of houses around you, styles and sizes. Any feedback from neighbors?
I've talked, so I sent letters to 11 of the neighbors within the 200-feet radius. I actually went and talked to five of them, the immediate ones, and there was no concerns.
Okay, good to hear.
Good question, Liz.
Actually, I have. If the commission doesn't give you approval for this building, do you have a backup plan, a smaller building that you would consider?
To reduce the size?
Yes.
Um, I, not as of yet, but I would consider that, yes.
Anybody else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point. You're welcome to sit down now if you want. You're welcome to stay there as well.
I appreciate the time.
All right. Any discussion? Anybody have any thoughts they want to share? Okay, ready to vote?
Any, any concerns from our town planner?
No, everything I had to offer is in the agenda review. Yes, it was just, we look at the, the math of it. It is the, the parcel. So, from a consideration standpoint, R20 would normally be 20,000 square feet and roughly half acre. So, the parcel is slightly larger than a half acre. So, it perhaps can accommodate a little more space in the fact that it's not built in behind it. Perhaps.
Yep.
Presents itself differently than a traditional, perhaps, R20 lot in an R20 neighborhood. But that's, that's all.
I mean, just my thoughts. I, I agree with that. Like, if this were in a denser neighborhood, and we've seen applications like that over the years, it's, it's a little bit more challenging to look at something that size. But with the neighbors not being concerned and with it backing up to woods and abandoned.
Highway to nowhere.
And highway, in my, in my opinion, I don't think it's much of a concern, but others can disagree. All right. I mean, I, I really like the idea of the GeoGrid. And it, it kind of keeps that natural look, but you don't have to worry about lots of mud all over the road and all that. And let's face it, you're, it's four cars. You're only pulling them out when it's a lot. Yep. All right, can we get a, any other comments or thoughts before we? Can we get a motion in a second, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for special permit for accessory structure in excess of 700 square feet and accessory structure greater than 30% of the principal residential building in our 20 zone by Christopher Stevenson, 26 Skyline Drive.
I'll second it. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Good luck. All right. Our second public hearing is CPD Properties and 342 Colt Highway LLC. Application for special permit and site plan approval for new fuel service station, convenience store, and quick-service restaurant at 342 Colt Highway. B1BR Zone continued from June 24th. Mr. Hoeb.
Yes, good evening. My name is Christian Hoeb. My office is located at 314 Main Street here in Farmington. I also live here in Farmington. I'd like to start by introducing the team, the available parties for the commission this evening. First is Scott Parker, who's the Operations Director of Facilities at, at the CPD Properties. Chris Tamula, engineer from Greenman Peterson, Incorporated. Heather Monticup, Director of Land Development from the same company. And Tim Eagles, from EDM Studio located in Unionville. Mr. Eagles is the Director of Architecture and the company's principal. By way of procedural background, by the way, can everyone hear me okay? Yeah, good. The original application was delivered to staff. The mailing notice is complete. This evening, I gave Madam Clerk the receipts. The plans and information have been timely filed with town staff. The sign was posted and has been maintained. I was there again today. I drive by this almost every day. I didn't do the best job. It's a little crooked, but it stayed through a number of storms. So, it's been maintained. Notices were published. Throughout the process, we've communicated with town staff. And we actually had a virtual meeting as recently as last Wednesday to review the application and sort of tie up loose ends or discuss any areas of concern. Garrett, Bruce, Ms. Rutherford were all present, as were my client. So, in addition to the plans, the drawings, the renditions, the applicant has filed a traffic impact and access study, and that was dated April 2024. And there's a stormwater, stormwater management report dated April 30th, 2024, which we asked to be incorporated into the record. You know this now. You've read the notes, the agenda. The site is 3.64 acres. It's a B1 zone that we're concerned with. Section 12B1 or Business Zone contemplates the proposed uses by virtue of the standards set forth in Article 4, Section 12, and I'll go through that later. Just by way, I'm sure, I'm very confident you all know where this is. Northerly is the Colt Highway. Across the street are office condos or office, offices for rent. Easterly is Fineman Road and, not exactly Easterly, but it's a Dunkin' Donuts and a Subway. Further down is an automotive repair. And then there are several residences. Diagonal from where we're located is the top of Bird's Eye Road. In those shops is in our delis, a coffee shop, a package store, and another use that I couldn't recall. Sorry about that, but there is another use in there. Southerly, there are residences on Cheryl Drive, Ellen Drive, and Fineman Road. And westerly, Cheryl Drive, residences are across from Cheryl. And then further down are Heritage Glen. Just to characterize this neighborhood, this is a bedrock neighborhood. This is, I went through it again today. I've gone through it a number of times. This neighborhood has been around, been around for a long time. It's extremely well-maintained. There's pride of ownership. And so, it's, it's actually a really nice neighborhood that, that's behind us. So, much of what you want to hear tonight comes from the engineers and the experts. So, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Tamula now, and he'll give you a kind of a rundown. And then we'll hear from Heather. And then, I think we're scheduled, let me just take a quick look at my notes. Tim Eagles will conclude. My client is here to answer any questions, and I'll be back in a little bit. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening. For the record, Chris Tamula, a professional engineer with Greenman Peterson, here on behalf of CPD Energy. So, obviously, Chris provided a brief overview of why we're here and the project. I can get into as little information or as much information as you want. I can go through existing conditions, all the way through landscaping, grading, roach controls, all that. But the plan you see before you is essentially our landscaping plan overlaid onto our site, our site development plan. So, what you can see in the middle of the sheet is the new store. It's a 5,400-square-feet convenience store with QSR, a quick-service restaurant. You can see actually where the, where the blue cars are in the front of the store. The front of the store is actually just directly behind the existing store that's there today. So, the store is pushed further back than what's out there in its current configuration. All right, in front of the store is the, the long rectangular structure, which is the fueling canopy. There's five islands, 10 fueling positions. The existing fueling canopy that's there today is slightly in front of that. And there are four islands and the, the rundown canopy that's there today. In front of the proposed fueling canopy, there are two new underground fuel storage tanks. My board fell over, so if anybody wants to see the actual plans, I can provide those as well. They're here for the audience if needed. So, the underground fuel storage tanks are in front of that. There'll be a brand-new, state-of-the-art underground fuel storage tanks. Curb cuts along Fineman Road. It's a full-access curb cut. You can see along the left-hand side, this curb cut is approximately 30 feet east of the existing curb cut that's closer to the intersection. So, we are cognizant of the fact that we are at an intersection. We've tried pushing it as far back as possible. Again, Heather's here to talk about any discussion that we've had with DOT. To date, I believe, under this current layout, we've had two meetings with DOT. They're generally accepting of the layout and the driver curb cuts. So, full access along Fineman and then along Colt Highway. What we are proposing is a, is a new right-in, right-out driveway. That driveway is, is generally in the same location as the, the, the driver that's out there today. It's, it's slightly further down, down the road, further from the intersection. It will be a right-in and a right-out with a, a divided island, scored concrete to allow any larger vehicles from getting in and getting out of the site as needed. We have 21 new striped parking spaces, so parking along the front of the building, parking along the side of the building. We are providing a patio area to the left of the, of the, of the new store. When we first started looking at the project and working with staff, there were some discussions of trying to develop a landscaping plan and some site features that are consistent with sort of the, the other developments in the area. And I believe the Five Corners development, which was recently developed a few years ago. We, what we did is we, we took that landscape plan and tried to emulate that as much as possible. So, we have a patio area. We have a lot of street trees. We have a lot of landscaping throughout the site. Along the right-hand side of the site, we do have the right rear. We do have a fenced dumpster, a fenced dumpster enclosure. Surround that, 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 that brown color on the plan, that's a retaining wall. There's a substantial grade. I'm sure you're all aware, there's a substantial elevation difference across the site from essentially where the, the proposed canopies are, all the way down to where Cheryl Drive is. It's about a 25-foot elevation drop. So, it's a lot lower along Cheryl Drive. In proximity to Cheryl Drive and the residences along there and the residential dwellings along Fineman, from the, from the light green, which is the edge of our tree clearing, we're 240 feet approximately to the, to the dwelling unit through the woods and across Cheryl Drive to the, to the south. And then we're about 180 feet through the woods to the nearest dwelling unit along Fineman. So, there is a substantial buffer zone through there. Along the, the, the page right top, there is an existing wetlands there. It's about 8,000 square feet. We did go to inland wetlands back in April. We did get approval for, for work within the, the buffer zone only. There's no impact to the wetlands itself. It's just work within the, the buffer zones. As part of that permitting process, there were some stipulations of kind of cleaning up the, the wetland. There's an outlet structure in there, kind of getting rid of some of the debris, the debris that's in there. There's some, we've added some no stockpiling and some no trash debris signs along Cheryl Drive to make sure, you know, people aren't, you know, dropping leaves and debris and garbage along that. So, we're trying to clean up that area of the, of the development as well. From a stormwater point of view, we have a, a new stormwater system, deep sump hooded catch basins, hydrant and em separateers to make sure there's treatment, pre-treatment. We have an underground stormwater system, which is a closed-pipe watertight system, which is generally located to the right-hand side of the building. And then there's, there's an outlet through the, through the, the retaining wall and then to a rip-rep apron that generally discharges out towards the wetlands. We have a jellyfish stormwater treatment system. We have no increase in peak rates of runoff for any of the storm events. We have a stormwater operation and maintenance manual and plan to make sure that the system is functioning during construction, after construction, and in perpetuity. Our utilities connect generally into Fineman. We did get some comments from, from Bruce talking about a location of where the existing sewer is or our intent is to generally tie into where the existing sewer is, so we're not ripping up the road any further than, than needed. We've had discussions with utility companies. So, we are proposing, at this point, based on discussions, we're proposing an overhead service with a new service pole and a transformer. At this point, based on discussions, we're proposing an overhead service with a new service pole and a transformer located generally to the left of the transformer pad itself. Obviously, what you know, if there's stipulations that the town wants us to go underground and we can work with the utility company, you know, we have no issues doing doing that as well. So we'll have new sewer, new water, new electric. The, again, like I talked about the landscaping, so all these, the circular. Symbols on the plan, those are all new street trees along the front. Where the half crescent moon is along the intersection there, we have a low landscape retaining wall, just a decorative wall and some landscaping, some low growth landscaping around that. And then obviously, we have a new freestanding sign that's generally located in that direction as well. From an erosion control point of view, obviously, we want to make sure that the surrounding areas are protected during construction. So we have silt sacks in all the catch basins that are that are proposed. The entire site would be surrounded by erosion control. To make sure that there's no sediment discharging towards the wetlands or towards the roadway system or any of the abutters. We have stabilized construction entrances. We have. So stockpile, so stockpiling areas. Essentially, our plans are generally what are considered construction documents. So you could take these plans, send them out to bid, a contract, be bid on it. They're not permit documents, so there's not going to be any major changes after, you know, after the, you know, hopeful approvals. So that's sort of the site plan in general. I can get into any other aspects as you want.
Talk about lighting for us, please.
Yep. So we do have a lighting plan. So we have new light poles surrounding the area. So there's no light trespass, obviously being 180 feet to the residence to the page north and 240 feet page, page right. There's no light trespass over any of the properties. We want to make sure there's safe lighting levels within the property, so there are freestanding lights. Downcastle, essentially dark sky compliant. The canopy needs to be lit to a certain level from a safety point of view. And then there was there was comments from from engineering talking about some light levels and some. Some color temperatures, so we're working on making those revisions. The comment letter that we did get from Bruce and we talked about last Wednesday, there's really nothing that we see as game changers. Minor details, minor changes to the plans, nothing that's really going to have any substantive change to the plans. Again, I can talk about as much as you want. I can turn it over to Heather. I can.
I may. I'm sorry to do it.
Feel free.
Engineering comments. I think we. Came to the conclusion that we could comply with the requests and would honor them as conditions of.
Absolutely.
If the commission saw fit. And the other thing I want to raise, there were a couple of areas of concern. One was potential more buffer on the end of the property. And we collectively felt like it may not, may be a buffering of a buffer. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, again, so like as I said earlier, so page north to the nearest residence, you're 180 feet to the nearest house. But you're going through woods. There's a pretty substantial amount of woodlands through there. It's actually from the the dark green line. It's about 140, 160 feet through the actual woods to the property line, and there's another 20 or 30 feet to the residence. This is, this is kind of maybe maybe a deceiving plan, because I think this looks like it's maybe in the fall. Where there's not a lot of tree, you know, tree cover and everything, but you can obviously, you can see the residential house to the bottom right. And then you can see along Cheryl Drive, you know, where the houses are, obviously, across the other side of Cheryl Drive. Through the woods, again, you're 240 feet to that nearest residence. So. There were comments from engineering to talk about some potential for additional screening and buffering. Again, we don't, since we're not cutting any trees within 140, 160 feet of a residence, we don't feel that it's it's real warranted to provide. As Chris said, a buffer to a buffer. With that, I can hand over to Traffic unless the board has any comments on on the site plans.
Good evening, everyone. Again, for the record, I'm Heather Monica, also with Greenman Peterson, who is also the traffic engineers for the proposed project. So as mentioned, we did prepare a full traffic impact and access study. It is dated April 16th, 2024. We talked about the existing conditions. We're reducing the number of curb cuts with this proposed site. We have one right in, right out driveway on Cold Highway and a full access driveway on Fineman. For existing conditions, we looked at 2024 conditions. We looked at the signalized intersection of Colt Highway and Fineman Road and Bird's Eye Road, as well as the site driveways. We looked at public transportation. We collected traffic volumes out there during the. Weekday AM, weekday PM and Saturday midday peak periods. We did COVID adjustments. We looked at seasonal adjustment. Excuse me, adjustments. And we. Looked at collision data out there at the signalized intersections. Obviously, the site driveways haven't had any. Action on them, so there was no collisions there, but we did look at the signalized intersection. We collected speed data out there. And we use that speed data to evaluate the site distances at the proposed site driveways, all of which meet the minimum ash tow requirements. Under future conditions, we look at both with and without the project, under the occupancy year, which is two, which is expected to be 2025. So for that, we look at historical traffic growth for any developments in the area. We use 1%. We had a few background developments to include. The commuter parking lot. There's some vacant office space in the area from when we did the counts. We we considered that in our COVID adjustments. There's a couple other developments, multifamily and things. Those are all included in our future. Conditions 2025 without the development in place, and then we add our site traffic onto it. We also looked if there were any roadway improvements planned. There are some in the area, some signal replacement, but nothing that should impact this particular intersection. For the site, we to figure out how much traffic it would generate. We look to the Institute of Transportation Engineers. That's the ITE Trip Generation Manual. And for that, we looked at two land use codes. We looked at land use code 945, which is a convenience store and gas station use. As well as land use code 936, which is a coffee donut shop without drive through. Right now, it's just labeled as a quick service restaurant. It's my understanding that there's no tenant. The coffee donut shop generated more traffic, so that's what we use for our numbers to be conservative. As you can imagine, if you're there getting gas, you might also, if it's a coffee shop or a. I don't know, a burger place, whatever, you might run in, fill your tank, but also run in and get that. That's called a multi-use trip. So one car could go to two uses. We are capped by Connecticut DOT to only allow a 10%. Credit for those trips. So it's usually much higher, like 20%, but we're capped to 10%. So that's in our numbers. In addition, uses like this, such as quick service restaurants and gas stations. Most people don't go out of their way, right? So they're pass by trips. They're they're impulse trips, right? As you're on your way to work or on your way home, you might stop and get gas or something. These two uses are are well over 50% of pass by trips. You could imagine that. But Connecticut, Connecticut DOT. Keeps us to 20% pass by for the quick service restaurant. And 55% for the convenience store gas station use. So what that means is. I'll. The the new trips to the area, I feel are conservative based on typical what ITE says pass by uses would be or multi-use. So I feel that the numbers, the new trips to the area that I'm about to present are probably on the conservative side. So during the weekday AM peak hour, the new trips to the area because of this development is 205 weekday AM peak hour trips. During the PM, it's 122 weekday PM peak hour trips. And on a Saturday, 160 Saturday midday peak hour trips. We did not. Take credit for the gas station convenience store that's there today. So when we look at our no build numbers, it's not like we reoccupied the gas station and then said, hey, we're going to just add a little bit of traffic. These numbers. Consider as if it's a vacant lot today. So that's what's in our traffic study. Once you distribute all that traffic that I talked about on all the different roadways, every which way, so beyond the site driveways, really. We're looking at traffic increases of anywhere from 18 to 82 vehicle trips per hour. So that equates to about one additional vehicle trip, depending on the roadway. Every almost minute, 44 seconds to three minutes and 20 seconds. So just depending on the roadway. Like we said, Colt Highway is going to carry about 70% of the traffic, 40. We're expecting 42 and from the west, 32 and from the east on on Colt Highway, Fineman 15%. To and from the south and 15% using Bird's Eye to and from the north. So that's that's why it's such a wide range. We run capacity and queue analysis to make sure, hey, what's the queues at the driveways, at the intersections, such such as that. So like I said, their study area is the. Signalized intersection of Colt Highway, Fineman and Bird's Eye. With or without the project in place, the overall intersection is expected to operate at level of service D or better during any of those three peak hours. However, the project does impact the Fineman northbound left turn lane. As you can imagine, we are restricting movements on Colt Highway. All any, any left has to come out Fineman and then take a take a left on Fineman onto Colt Highway. So for that, we are proposing some signal timing modifications to try to fix that and balance the timings. In addition, based on our discussions with Connecticut DOT prior to preparing the traffic study, they asked that we. Replace the lane drop sign and also re-stripe the the dashes there on Fineman. Just drove through the site. Looks like they've kind of just been painted, but we will make sure that if they are not, they're painted again. So as I mentioned, those are recommended improvements that are listed in the traffic study. Just based on our analysis and based on our discussions with Connecticut DOT. We did receive comments from Connecticut DOT back in June. They their comments were more about how are we closing the curb cuts? Just give a little bit more information. Our driveway on Colt Highway, we're going to have to remove a bit of the guardrail. They wanted to make sure that the guardrail wasn't going to impede sightlines. So we've we've analyzed that. It's not going to, and we will respond accordingly. They wanted to know about a utility pole. One of their comments was they really want us to redesign that island on Colt Highway. Make it a little bit more robust to to define it more as a right in, right out. So that is something that we'll be looking at in the in the next. Set. They wanted to see the truck turns, which we'll be providing to them. And they asked us to include some standard details in there. As was already previously mentioned, we got town comments back in June as well. We have not responded to any of these comments formally yet, but as just mentioned, we don't see any problem with any of the comments that we've received from Connecticut DOT. Or the town that we shouldn't be able to address to the to the town satisfaction. So we will be responding to those formally. It just hasn't been done at the time of this meeting. So that is the. Conclusion of the traffic presentation. I'll now pass it over to architecture or. And then we can take comments on the project. Thank you very much.
I'm Tim Eagles with EDM Studio in Unionville. A couple of years ago, we were approached by CPD to. Design a building for this corner. We're super excited when they told us they wanted to do a really high quality building. On the corner. For the town. We've brought some views to run you through this evening to take a look at the different angles. The first three views I'm going to show you are. From the street and then we'll enter the site and kind of look around the building. The the initial ideas that they and we had were to use traditional forms. Durable, long term, maintenance free materials. And I think you'll see that in the shapes and forms that we've put together for this particular building and site. So this first image is looking from the corner, looking westbound on Colt Highway. With the site to the kitty corner to the left. So at your back, back right corner is Rebel Dog and the new development kitty corner across the street. If we proceed down to the next image. That's coming up Fineman Road with the building on your left, so going northbound with the development on the left. You can see the the street trees that Chris was talking about earlier with the building in the background. Down one more is the approach coming off. Colt Highway. Eastbound, the morning commute eastbound. And the intersection that Heather was just talking about with the raised island. Right in, right out. Canopy in front, building directly behind that. The next image, we'll go on a little bit further. One thing we did notice. With the help of Shannon, is this particular image shows a previous version. Of the islands that had. A total of 10 pumps and 20 stations. In reality, there's only five pumps and 10 filling stations. The canopy itself is corrected, but what's under it will only be single pumps. To the rear of the pump. Is the building. Once again, a clapboard building, brick entry, simple gable ends connecting the two. Swinging around the backside of the building, very simple, the two two gable forms with the shed roof coming down in between. We're going to have some. Utilities out back and ideas to one for each tenant. Be a pad bounded condenser, whatever the mechanical systems are for the building. They'll be screened on the backside with some fencing. The tenant on the east side of the building. More than likely some sort of restaurant. The idea is that there would be roof exhaust on that. We've tucked it inside. As you can see, there's a representation of a roof fan or something. It'd be tucked on the inside, so. The only place you're going to see it from is in the trees behind you. Will not be able to see it from the roadside. Coming around this side, you can see the terrace. That was spoken about on the east side of the building with the with the restaurant, potential restaurant. Tenant with three tables to be able to enjoy the exterior. Swing around the front of the building, the idea of a central entry that would access both tenant spaces. Simple open fronts, a lot of glass facing to bring daylight into the front and provide visibility into the spaces. For both the convenience store side and the. Future tenant, food service tenant on the east side of the building. Just swinging out a little bit further. You know, once again, the view with the canopy in front, the building in the back. This is a view just showing the sign at the front, which I think Scott wanted to talk a little bit about. It's a fairly diminutive sign, six feet wide. Five feet tall on a one foot podium. So we're going to have to really think about plantings around that, exactly what we're going to do. And then the last slide is. The visibility of the sign coming from. Coming, coming, going eastbound on Colt Highway. So. As you can see, not very visible. So. Scott, I don't know if you want to, or Chris?
That would be the. Wave of my hand. Thank you. Okay, I can just have a moment.
So. Anytime you contemplate an application like this, you refer to the special permit criterion. And the business zone. So the business zone does contemplate these uses. But more importantly, it sort of refers us. To the special permit criterion. And it it requires that you, the commission. Consider the following. And one is that the existing and future character of the neighborhood in which the zone and or use is to be located will be protected. Well. This is a very small envelope. There is a existing. Conservation easement declaration. Although I didn't represent the client in the original wetlands, I understand there was a. Another requirement to encumber the property. With a conservation easement. Town staff has again requested that of us in this application, which we will provide. If required by this commission. We think it's already there. I think it's a little redundant, but I can understand the ask and so. We feel like the neighborhood will be protected by that. Rather significant buffer there exists. Two, the adequate safeguards have been taken to protect adjacent property in the neighborhood. In general, from detriment. Well, I don't think this significantly impacts the general neighborhood. Three, that traffic circulation within the site. And the amount, location and access to parking is adequate. An adequate site distance is provided for all proposed and existing driveways. You've heard the testimony of our. Traffic expert and we feel we meet that criterion. Four, that the road network to include intersections impacted by the proposed development. Will be capable of satisfactorily handling the increased traffic generated by such use. I would submit that a lot of that traffic is already existing. I suspect it's coming down Colt Highway.
I would submit that a lot of that traffic is already existing. I, I suspect it's coming down Colt Highway. So I think the roads will more than meet uh the needs of this application. Uh five, that the basic design of the proposal use or buildings is a relationship between the buildings and the land, that there's overall physical appearance of the proposed use or will, or buildings will be in general harmony with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and will not serve to blight or detract from abutting residences or other property. Again, based on the amount of buffer, I don't think will impact the neighborhood. We're uh right across the street from the subway and the Dunkin' Donuts. There's an automotive uh business across the street. I, I'm not sure how busy that is, but it, that building still exists. So uh and this has a historical use as a station and it had a little market tucked in it as well. So I don't think there's a significant change. We don't have an issue where we're proposing increased building density over that permitted of use. All, seven is that all required public services will be reasonably available to, to serve the proposed development. And uh we, you've heard testimony tonight that we can accomplish that as well. So um that, that section, by the way, also reads that the commission may attach conditions to an approval of a special permit or site plan in conjunction with a special permit or zone change to ensure compliance with the above standards. Well, this isn't a zone change, but I don't think any reasonable conditions would be rejected by my client. So I, I think that concludes our presentation in chief. Uh I suspect there are some neighbors here that may have questions or want to make comments. Is there anything else that I may have missed at least? As a preliminary matter? No. Okay. I'm going to stand down and fire away with questions and hopefully you'll identify who you want to answer them.
All right. Appreciate, appreciate the presentation. Thank you. Commissioners, Matt.
All right.
Pick a person, yeah.
Sorry. Uh I don't know who's the best to answer this question. So right off the bat, I'm just curious about the hours of operation of the facility.
Um for the record, Scott Parker, Director of Facilities for the company that owns the station. Twenty-four hours is what we do all of our stores. I don't know if you're familiar with Chestnut Markets. We're starting to brand them around probably the closest one. Uh we've got one in Old Lime and we've got one in Danbury. But it's convenience, you know, that's, that's our plan. So twenty-four hours, seven days a week is when we intend on being open.
And when, when will you turn the lights down? At what, at what time during the day are the lights going to be at full, at full strength the entire twenty-four hours every day of the year?
Well, the lights are based on, if it's dark, they're going to be lights on. Um but as, as um Chris mentioned, they are all downlight, they're all uh dark sky compliant. Uh and again, there's a significant buffer between us and, and any residential. And just to clarify that, we do own the property around this, all that we're showing with the trees and everything.
Sure.
Uh we do own that and pay taxes on that and we are, we're agreeing to put a conservation easement on that.
Okay. So you, you agree to the conservation easement?
Yes.
Okay. Uh what about fuel deliveries? How often?
A station this size is going to be two, three times a week and we can limit those delivery hours. Uh typically, that's a concern. Obviously, you don't want trucks coming in and out at night, no matter how far away uh from residential. But so we can limit those hours. That can be a, a condition. You know, typically, we want to keep it away from any, you know, rush hour, either morning or afternoon, but midday or after rush hour in the evening before, you know. If, again, you know, if there's a specific time, we can certainly consider it. And that would be with any kind of delivery, any garbage truck, any-
Sure. When the restaurant, I assume you don't know the restaurant?
We don't. And just to clarify that, until we have a project, nobody will sign on. You know, so that's kind of where we're at as far as who that tenant will be. We do not know yet.
Would, would the restaurant also be a twenty-four-hour restaurant?
I don't think so. I don't know of any restaurant that would want to be.
Right.
You know, typically, we, in some cities, we have something that's twenty-four hours, but I don't see-
Yeah, that could cause problems. Twenty-four-hour restaurants tend to cause problems, right? So-
Yep.
What about EV charging stations? Any plan for those?
So we do, we consider those at all of our locations. A lot of it has to do with, with the electrical infrastructure, you know, whether the utility company can provide the power necessary. Doing one in Westchester County right now, uh New York, where the store with the gas and everything requires, you know, a hundred uh KV J, or um transformer. The chargers require a thousand, you know, so it's, there's, there's a lot of power for these chargers, as you might know. And that's because we want to do level three charging. We want to make sure that people can get something that's useful while they're there. But we do certainly consider that in all of our locations.
Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation. No more questions for me.
Thanks, Matt. Bob?
No, Matt covered a couple of my questions. The only thing, excuse me, the only thing I have uh snowplow considerations. Do you have a section where you plan on mounding snow and-
I think you designated snow storage on site. Yeah, it's, it's shown on the site plan.
So it's not going to impede wetlands and we're going to try and keep all that away from all that? All right, then I'm good for now.
Thanks for being here and for your presentation. Uh my question is for Shannon. Shannon, is the town, uh, does the town have any concerns about the uh increase in traffic? And what we heard about the report that was conducted or the study that was conducted?
Well, as the uh staff reviewed the report, I would concur with the statements made in the report and the reports being reviewed by the DOT because the intersection is governed by the, the, by the Connecticut DOT being on State Route Six.
Okay. Thanks. No further questions.
Okay, Liz?
Uh okay, um one, a, a point of curiosity, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer this. What is a jellyfish system?
Water treatment. You can give the technical-
Oh, see, I, I was reading that and like jellyfish.
Sure. Um so a jellyfish system is what they consider a proprietary uh treatment device. So um think of a um a standard manhole structure, you know, your round manhole, five foot diameter. What the jellyfish um system is, it's sized based on the amount of water coming into the system, independent of how much your pre versus post is. And it's, and it basically, they call it jellyfish because they are these, these tall cartridges and they have these little, they call them tentacles. So when the water comes in, what it does is capture, as, as the water raises up, it captures all the, the particles in the actual tentacles. And then when the water recedes, the tentacles hold on to the, um the particles. Then based on their um, their maintenance sched, their maintenance schedule, they come out, they actually remove the, uh the, the individual tentacles. They um dispose of them based on uh town and state regulations, uh then they essentially put them back in. So they're reusable um and based on the size of each one of the units, uh you may have a, a structure that has uh six of these cartridges. You may have twenty of these cartridges. So it's all based on the amount of water flow.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. I actually understood it. So, okay, thanks. Um my other question is um about the driveways and kind of traffic-y. On the left turn out, or on the exit onto Phelimin Road, is there consideration for having a left turn only lane and a right turn lane? Um I'm just wondering, because will you get queued up for the people who've got to get across those lanes to make the left to get back onto Route Six?
I, yes, I understand what you're saying. So um I did fail to mention in my presentation, I skipped right from the signal over to mitigation. We have run the analysis and our traffic impact study based on the analysis um shows that we'll have one queue, one vehicle or less on each driveway leaving. However, um I do understand that there is a traffic signal there and that when the light is red, you can't leave. So there, there's prob, you're, you're, I'm not saying that when you go out there, you will only see one car and never more than that. It's, it, we're, we're talking in a, in a s- time and of course, the queue might have to clear and then the cars can go out. But because of the queuing that we have on site, um it's, it's not like we have some weird configuration driveway where we're turning and whatever. We have a full aisle to queue people. I, I do understand that by doing that, we, we could upset onsite circulation, but it should, it will not impact flow in and out of the site or operations on Phelimin or Colt Highway. I know it's hard to tell on the scale, but there's at least on the plan, there's at least two vehicles that can queue uh before blocking a parking spot, right? Because we, we consider it about twenty feet uh for an onsite queue um because cars get a little bit closer. So we have enough room for about two vehicles to queue up there uh without, you know, impeding any onsite circulation. And then beyond that, depending on where cars are parked, of course. We have not given consideration to two lanes. I guess it's something that we can look at. This is a, a personal preference. On an unsignalized intersection, two lanes leaving, sometimes with the size of cars impede sightlines because if you have a big SUV next to you, you can't see. So um I don't prefer it, but I'm not going to say that there aren't site plans that I've worked on that have two, two lanes exiting. You are correct. Um if we could fit it, uh right turns might be able to get out. However, the way the site is, is set up, we can't push it back any further because we have a restriction with the zoning line and whatnot. I don't know what adding a, a little pocket there would do. Um they, they might not be able to get to it. So um if, if, if the board was definitely had their heart set on that, I'm, I'm sure it's something that we could look at and see, but I just don't know how, how much it's going to help anything. Because like I said, we do have that queuing area behind to, to queue those vehicles in times when there is a red light.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. I, I couldn't tell from the plan how much space there was. Okay, and the, one other question about the, the entrances that you say there, there are separate and there is one like vestibule into the building and then it-
That's what-
Kind of choose a door.
Yeah.
The picture looks-
Yeah, so if you look at it, that you can get from either side and then that center door, a lot of times we actually do that as an automatic door.
Okay.
So that there's not a whole lot of people, you know, running into each other. But really, the vestibule is for obviously hot and cold, not coming in and out to, to provide that buffer for the air.
Okay, and then if they had to shut, and if the restaurant closed it, say-
So what we've done in the past in a situation like this, there's a gate that pulls across. So this, that wall that you see there, sometimes it's a glass wall, sometimes it's a solid wall and there would be a gate that comes across to close it.
Okay.
So that there would not be access and restrooms would be in both spaces. So there would always be restrooms available.
Okay, thank you very much. Very thorough presentation.
Dave?
Um yeah, uh I'm wondering about, is there going to be any kind of vacuum for cars or air tire filling?
I'll stay up here.
We typically do a combination machine uh for air and vacuum.
And do we know that those meet our noise ordinance levels?
That's a good question. I could get, we've got many different kinds. I could go to our manufacturer. That could be a condition. That's no problem.
What about um spills of gasoline? Like, how do we, what, what do we have to mitigate that?
So the, the what, I mean, there's no intent for it ever to get to any catch basin, but that's, you know, the treatment, if it ever did, that's what, that's what Chris was talking about. But we have, uh there's training required for every employee on site. There are spill kits located on site. We've, you know, with booms that go around anything, there, we, uh, we have a very robust safety program for that kind of thing.
Um I'm just, uh from the drawing, it looks like the trees might um impact visibility for people getting out. But then I saw uh the draw, the, the drawings from this side didn't seem to do that, but is that?
Well, I, I know that street trees are required, right? I mean, we're, we're, we're meeting a, a section of the code by putting in these street trees. So-
They're high-handled trees, so they wouldn't block the sightlines. We always, we've trained our site engineers well on that one.
Very good. Um and then is there a lot of signage for the right in, right out?
Yep. So we have, uh we appropriate the right in, right out signage, all M U T C D signage, um do not enter. You know, signs where appropriate and so it's, it's pretty, pretty standard.
All right, no other questions. Thank you.
Bruce?
Great presentation. I think there's a lot of work that's uh gone into this. Um I think I want to ask a little bit more about the quick service restaurant because you don't have a tenant uh at this time. I guess my concern is that it might morph into something with unintended consequences. Let me articulate my, my point by, by way of example. Like, when I, when I think of this, I think the intent is somebody, you know, grabbing a quick burrito for lunch and being on their way. But if you, if you get a pizza place in there and they have a robust takeout business, wouldn't that blow your traffic out of the water? People coming in and out, you know, especially around the dinner hour, taking pizza boxes out of there. With only eighteen seats, I think some tenant would be highly motivated to do a robust uh takeout business. So that, that could be kind of concerning if that grew in that way. Or if you had like a coffee place that wanted to uh come in on another way, like Starbucks, hey, there's a Dunkin' Donuts there and there's a Rebel Dog. And hey, we want to, we want to get in there and they're going to put comfy chairs in the eighteen and then people will be hanging out for hours and hours. I think we would probably have some concern about uh, about that. So do you have any um covenants in, in restricting the potential things that a tenant could do when they come into there? Because as I said, I'm worried about unintended consequences, depending on who you get.
Yeah, I, I, I can't agree to any kind of, you know, I, we could consider them, you know, but we can't preclude, you know, a, a tenant be, because, and I think that Heather can speak on this, that we went conservative. Like, when you use the, the coffee shop, that's considering a Starbucks, a Dunkin' Donuts, uh you know, and a lot of that, most of that is takeout, you know. So I think we went conservative when we did the traffic study and during peak hours AM, right?
Correct. And also, um if it was a pizza place or a McDonald's or a whatever, Burger King, I don't know. That would all be fast food restaurant without drive-through window and that we took a look at both and used the most conservative. So um that's why we used coffee donut shop because we didn't know who it was and it just had more peak hour trips. You are correct, particularly during the AM is when the coffee shop is and maybe the PM might get a little bit more with a, with a fast food restaurant. But I don't think that the differences would be so amazingly different um that it, it would be a concern.
Thank you. Uh one last uh question related to uh security concerns. Would you have uh cameras throughout there for all your, especially if we're doing a twenty-four hour-
We have cameras in all of our facilities. We have cameras that cover everything. And they're not just remotely recorded, they're also sent to the clouds. Nobody can go in and steal something and have it go away. Uh we've provided in the past access to local police departments to those cameras to, you know. So yes, we have, we have panic buttons, we have training, we have a, we have a whole manual for our, for our staff.
Good, good. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
No further. Thanks, Bruce. Mike?
I know you haven't done the uh turn radius study or whatever for traffic yet, but um I guess I would say, it looked like there was enough room for refueling, you know, eighteen wheeler to come in on the three D animation, but-
Oh, you can't hear me? I'm sorry. Um my concern is uh it looked, it, on this map, it looks a little narrow on the Colt Highway end for an eighteen wheeler coming in. I'm assuming there is enough room for it to come in without-
So um, so I believe in our package, there should be an actual truck turn plan. Um and the truck turn is actually scheduled to come in from Phelimin, circulate around in a counterclockwise manner. Typically, they, uh from a safety point of view, you want the driver uh to be offloading on the right-hand side, on the passenger side. So what that does, it provides protection from um the, the fuel, the delivery driver who's dropping the fuel, the truck. So nobody can, you know, run into them. So then basically the, the tanker uh truck would circulate around the canopy and then exit back out to the hut, back out to the roadway system.
That was my next question because I think if they were leaving to go across Colt Highway, that might be a huge issue.
Yeah, so one, one of the original layouts actually sort of contemplated, hey, you know, can we make Colt Highway a full access driveway? And then we do our site walk and we say, well, there's three lanes of traffic. How's a truck going to get, how's a car going to get across there? So based on our discussion with DOT, it was actually discussed that you cannot have that. You need to have the right in and the right out, um you know, curb cut with the, uh with the island there.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thanks, Mike. I, I do have a couple of questions. Well, first, I believe Shannon signage is a separate application, right? So we're not really considering that, that piece tonight. Okay, just wanted to clarify that. The, everybody's stuck on the Colt Highway right turn um thing here. So is there, is that a, like an island or a raised structure between the turns? I couldn't-
It's a, it's-
One of the features that didn't look like it and, but I thought you mentioned it.
Never really, you know, uh rely on the architects. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't, you know, look, let, let's look over here.
All right.
No, that's, um, so what that is, it's a scored concrete island. Uh so it's essentially like a three-inch tall. So it's just a little rumble strip. So for a, a larger vehicle, you're not going to really feel it, but for your regular passenger car, it's not something that you want to drive over and feel comfortable driving. So that's the intent of those. It's to, uh and, and again, that, that strip is actually getting-
So that's the intent of those. It's to, and and again, that, that strip is actually getting larger based on comments from D O T as well as engineering. So it's just, so essentially the, the eighteen foot wide driveway is, is right now, we're looking at making that a twelve foot wide driveway. And that additional six feet is going to be the rumble strip. So just gonna be a much larger island.
Yeah.
There's no meeting on.
Yeah, for obvious reasons, that's an accident waiting to happen, as you talked about with the D O T assembly. I just take a left out of there.
That's why you always go to a site before you finalize the design.
And then I know you went over it at the beginning, but help me out again where this building is located, like in relation to the old building and how much. Of that, we showed the picture from the G I S of the trees. How far back are?
I'll stand, I'll stand over here and I'll try to point as best possible. So here is the existing convenience.
Okay.
And here's the front of the building. The existing fuel canopy is located here. And our new, our new one is back here. So everything is pushed further back from, from what's out there today.
And about how far back is it?
This, this distance is about ten or fifteen feet of the, of the back corner. And then the existing canopy here, you're talking anywhere from five to ten feet further back from the, so the back of the existing canopy. Are, will be approximately five to ten feet from the front of our new canopy.
And so does that mean there's ten or fifteen feet of trees coming down behind? Where where trees exist now? And we looked at the G I S before. I guess I'm trying to get a sense of how much of that re buffers coming out.
Here's the existing tree line right now. So we're, we're probably cutting about forty to fifty feet of trees.
Okay, all right, that's helpful.
From this zone line again to the rear, you're about a hundred and sixty feet.
Right.
To the property line.
Okay.
Eighty feet or so to the, to the residence.
Okay, appreciate that. All right, thank you. I think I'm all set for now.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any like burning question pop up while we're going through? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the room who would like to speak for or against this application, please come up to the podium, state your name and. Address and. Share your comments.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Margolis. I live at five Chimney Hill Drive. I am the president of the Homeowners Association and I represent forty-four homes. Just west of Fineman Road, which wasn't mentioned in your presentation, by the way. It's one of the nicest communities in in Farmington and we're right across from the apartments and condos. We're thrilled. Thank you very much for the presentation. We're thrilled that finally something is going to be happening after five plus years of. Just that corner being a, in total disrepair. And we're glad to see that something's gonna happen. My big question is, if it's approved and when it's approved. When will construction begin? When will demolition can take, take place? When will it be built? When will it be ready to be opened? We've waited a very, very long time for this to happen and it, we need to get it done sooner rather than later. Okay, because our property values are important to us and. Right now, they, you people, I go by there every day. We all go by there every day and there are many members of our community here right now. And some of them may want to speak, but we all have the same concern. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Chris, can we hold, can we like hold and do it all at the end?
Yeah, I wasn't sure whether you wanted.
Yeah, otherwise it gets too kick, so.
Hi, I'm Ellen Margolis, five Chimney Hill Drive. My concerns with the presentation, and thank you for your presentation, is with the traffic. Your right in, right out. Entrance to the gas station. Is there what you talked about signage? Is there going to be signage that says if someone's traveling? And I know I don't have my directions right, but traveling up Route Six. Towards Bristol, is there going to be a no turn, a no left turn sign there? And. Let me tell you, where Rebel Dog is and our delis, there's as big as life. A no left hand turn sign there and it does no good. People take a left hand turn into that small complex there. So. I hope that if there's a sign, it's gonna be big and it's gonna be prominent. Also, that intersection. That's a problem intersection. We go through it all the time. I go through that intersection two or three times a day. One of my biggest complaints, which is not your problem, is the number of people that take a right turn on red. When there is a sign right there. So my question is, I've spoken to your town traffic engineer about this. Matt and I used to work together. And. I asked him, why isn't there a sign up on the trip where the traffic light is? When people are looking straight ahead, they don't stop at the stop line. They go past it, they don't see the sign. So my question is, is there going to be new traffic signals there? Because. If there is, I'm gonna call Matt again and I'm gonna say, now you can put your no turn on red sign. At the traffic light, but it would make that a much safer intersection. I can't tell you how many times I've almost gotten collided with a car who's turning where they shouldn't. I'm taking a left from Dunkin' Donuts, I'm taking a left and. It, it's the intersection, something has to be done with the timing of the traffic lights at that intersection. Not just for this develop, this project, but. For the safety of everyone who goes through there. The increased traffic will affect those of us in Chimney Hill. There are times, usually morning drive, evening drive, where it's almost impossible to get. Into our development because of the oncoming traffic. By the same token, it's even worse early in the day getting out of it. So the traffic will have an impact. On Chimney Hill. That wasn't mentioned in your presentation. Those are my major concerns. I, I think it's great that we're finally getting something there, that blighted corner. It shouldn't, it should not have taken this long. I don't know what the holdup was, but it should not have taken this long. Excuse me, to get it developed. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for your presentation. My name is Kevin Nugent. I live at Seven Hearthstone. And I guess, after having looked at the renderings here, first of all, I'm glad to hear that you're moving the station itself. And a little bit more north, I guess that would be our, yeah, north, more offset off, off both Fineman and off of Cold Highway. Have you considered in that area where you're making that, that grassy area that currently exists there? Which is fairly sizable, but not, I think it's in, your plan is to make it probably a little bit bigger. Have you thought about maybe having a privacy knoll? So rather than just flat topography to the road, actually might help with your sign if you can have a. You can have a smaller sign and still have it up off the road. People can visually see it. Maybe have fewer lights cascading into your garage area with a privacy knoll. Both on the Fineman side as well as on the Cold Highway side. I guess my concern is more on the Cold Highway side. I don't think it would limit view in terms of coming in or out of it because. Again, it's, it's set back in and both the exits and entrance ways are curved, so you can visually see down. The trees aren't blocking it. But I think it would do a lot for aesthetics. Not that we want to hide your facility. I'm sure it's gonna be very beautiful and anything's better than what's there currently, which is nothing short of a blight, but. I think it'd be wonderful if you really considered seriously, rather than just a flat topography, a flat grade. Something that's got a little bit or more of a privacy knoll to it. I think it would give you some room for some plantings, maybe a little landscaping work. The trees could be elevated slightly higher. It would give your sign a little bit more visibility, maybe not have to be as high. Maybe you could make it longer and shorter. Just a, a thought and hopefully you would consider it, because I think that would be a very nice aesthetic as you pull up in the car to see more grassland. Than see street level building and pumps. Second question I have is in terms of your covers over the pumps. Again, I don't have the particulars here, but how large are they gonna be? And it's gonna be one, looks to me like it's, whoops, that one long unit rather than individuals, correct? And how long, since you're only gonna be one pumps, you're saying that instead of two, so only for two cars, it'd be for one car? They'll be even smaller in size than the, correct? Which is, I think. From our standpoint, a win in terms of the community. Those are really, you know, my concerns are really the, the visible look off the street. Into the, into the area is making sure that maybe considered very seriously, the landscaping being a little bit more. Fitting to the neighborhood. And if you come in our neighborhood, you're gonna see that privacy knolls, landscaping, nice aesthetics. And I think it'll add to the look of your, of your facility, of your property by doing that and elevating your sign up a little bit, like I said, also maybe. Knocking off some of those turns when people are coming in off Fineman going down. Cold Highway, instead of having all those lights cascading into the buildings over there, maybe the hill will, that little privacy knoll will. Give you a little bit more, less light and also aesthetically from the street, good, a good view for those that are traveling back and forth through there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Fred Klein. I live at sixteen Chimney Hill Drive. And you can see that there are a number of us here from Chimney Hill. I've lived in Connecticut for almost forty years. We've lived in Glastonbury, Marlboro. We moved to Farmington two years ago. To be closer to our children and our grandchildren who also live in town and we love living here. Thank you for doing what you do. I appreciate that. I've served on boards and. Sometimes it's a thankless job, but I really appreciate you folks watching out for the community. I've reviewed the application and I really appreciate the excellent job you folks did. In your presentation tonight. I do have one question and that was raised by, I believe, the engineer said. That there were some minor tweaks, minor changes. If I heard you correctly to the application. What's minor to some people could be major to others. I'd be interested in knowing what those changes are. But I, I don't think I have a concern. I fully support. My wife and I fully support the application. I think we all benefit from this proposal, gas station and a convenience store. Whatever food facility might be there. But most of all, and I think you've heard it from some of the other folks, we really need to remediate the current blight. At that major gateway to our town. People getting off of eighty-four from exit thirty-eight or Fineman Road or coming down Birds Eye all see this eyesore. And it reflects poorly on our town. I think that this development will do a lot to alleviate this eyesore and enhance the image of the town. My concern is that the property has been neglected for years. And I think that the town should and can take action to ensure that the owner. Will do what they say. Also. Based upon a track record of. Leaving this. Property in its current conditions. I think that you have the authority in granting a special permit to also require that they properly maintain. The facility once it's built. And I think that that's important based upon the track record, although I. I, I believe, I didn't know anything about your company before tonight. And it's good to hear that you have other facilities similar to this. It'd be interesting to see what they're like. I have no idea. But, you know, maybe you folks can do that. So to that end, I think that the town has at its disposal. A mechanism to create an incentive to encourage the owner to fulfill its commitment. I really like this idea. I really want to see it come to fruition. What I don't want to see is a nice presentation. And then nothing ever happened and then this eyesore just stay where it is. And I appreciate the fact that you've done a lot of. Work to create this proposal. Clearly, you've spent money and and an effort to do it. But I think we've all lived through proposals and not seen them to come to fruition. So to that end, I suggest that the town approve the project, but. Condition its approval on completion of the project by some reasonable deadline. And I don't know what that is. And you might want to ask the developer how long they, they feel that it will take. To develop the project and maybe put in some sort of a reasonable deadline that. If you're to approve a special permit, the project has to be completed by a date certain. To encourage compliance, I think the town should apply the maximum fine at its disposal. Against the property as a current eyesore. Okay, for each day that this blight continues until the project is completed. But. So as not to be punitive. I suggest that the town defer collection of any fine and waive it completely. If the project is completed by that deadline. If it is, there would be no fine. It would be waived. If this is an empty promise, the fine would apply. I think that that would be a real incentive to make sure that this comes to fruition. So it would be up to the owner. Okay, if the owner does the right thing and develops the property as they say they will, there would be no fine. If this is a ruse, to simply allow them to maintain this property in its current dilapidated condition. They should be held responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you had your hand up, right? Yeah.
Hello, I'm Patricia Worley. I live at twenty-five Chimney Hill. I'm the newbie on the block. But, and I love it. I love living in Farmington. I've always loved Farmington. I just came from the library. I've utilized the resources many a time. My son and I, when he was little, we used to enjoy Farmington. So finally, I'm here. But I've lived in the area my whole entire life. I have spent sixty-five years going through five corners. And I know what five corners is, what it refers to, and it's always been a traffic issue. Just the configuration of it. And just today, without even thinking about this meeting coming, I was realizing. Gosh, it's just an awful configuration of traffic. No matter what you do to it, you took away one corner. So no one. When I say five corners, people say, what is that? Because there are only four corners now, but they're just odd corners. So traffic flow is difficult, no matter how you look at it. So thank you for your work on this. It looks really good. Thank you for your work on it. I do, I really feel like it would be a great thing for the area. It would be nice to have some gasoline available for people that commute that way. It's a great stop. I have talked to one of the other business owners across the street and they feel like it would benefit them as well. As business owners, it will benefit the entire community, not just myself, but everyone coming through. So I'm trusting all of you to do diligence and. Make the, make the best of an awful traffic situation. Please, I love it. It looks great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room that wishes to speak about this application? All right, Shannon?
Okay, if anyone has called in online to offer comment on the three forty-two Colt Highway application for gas station and convenience store. Please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Okay, Carolyn Boulay, you can unmute your microphone. Please provide your full name and address for the commission and then any comment that you have to offer.
Carolyn, can you hear me?
Yes.
Carolyn Boulay, nineteen Jeffrey Drive, Farmington.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if there's going to be any sidewalk on Colt Highway. I just can't remember where it ends like that condo complex down there. Will there be a sidewalk? So people can walk up to the gas station or will there be any access from like Cheryl Drive to the back of the building?
Okay, is there any other, so we'll have, we're collecting all the comments and then we'll open it up. The applicant will respond. So if there's anything else or any other question you have, we'll take that.
Um, did you say that you're not talking about the signage? Cause I just didn't hear anything about like the really big tall sign with the sign with the prices. Is that not part of tonight?
Correct.
Okay, and I'm for it, by the way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else has called in, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Again, if anyone else has called in to offer comment on three forty-two Colt Highway, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised.
Thanks, Shannon. Mr. Haab.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may just sort of like MC, I, I jiving down questions.
Appreciate that.
I'm sure if I miss them, the commission or our team will remind me. And so I'll try to do this in order, but before I do, I want to thank the members of the audience for constructive comments. Sometimes it doesn't go that way and I found the theme tonight where people that were very interested, proud of their neighborhood and making suggestions that I, as I heard them, thought, oh, that's, that's an interesting one and helpful. So I, I felt like I should say that. Mr. Margolis asked about when, and that was also asked a second time. So Scott, if you could come up and just give us a timeframe, I think we would have to get DOT approval, which will take some time. But I'm not going to triangulate it. Here's the man right here.
Again, you know, like Christian just said, once we have all of the approvals. Our next step is financing. You know, we don't have just four or five million dollars sitting ready for this project. We do, we have, you know, rotating lines, but we need to have a project approved before we can get our financing ironed out. That being said, I can say that if we are able to get an approval. I think I can scrape the money together to at least knock the building down, the existing building and canopy. I can't do that until we have approval because that would be part of the project, part of the redevelopment project. As far as a timeline, I don't know how long it would take to go through for the building permits. But again, construction itself on something this size with all the infrastructure, the infiltrators, underground storage tanks, that kind of stuff, you're talking a construction schedule that could be up to seven or eight months. So anything less than that would just be setting us up to, you know, unrealistic expectations as far as completion. But, you know, again, not knowing how long it would take to get through the, the permitting process with the town and DOT. You know, a year from when we got approval till project being done. Doesn't seem unrealistic. And then I, I don't know how long the approvals are good for in Farmington. I assume it's a year, you know, so. That's kind of, and if we came back in front of it in a year and hadn't done anything, obviously you're not going to like us. So that's not where we want to be. But as far as the property in its existing condition now. Again, I can't do anything until I have a project. So if we get approvals while we're going through with our permitting, we can knock everything down. Now that wouldn't be ripping up all the asphalt curb, stuff like that, because ripping that up now is just an additional cost. But as far as bringing the building and the canopy down to slab, we can do that.
Thank you. Okay, Ellen Margolis talked about traffic. And then a no turn signal and then a big, an additional big sign about access. And then a sign over the turns and I, that sounds like traffic-y to me, if you don't mind Heather. Traffic-y, traffic-y. So I'm just going to get out of your way here.
So I just wanted clarification. We are proposing. Connecticut DOT actually had a comment about the no left turn sign leaving the driveway. Are you also, we do not currently have one posted out on Colt Highway to restrict lefts into the driveway. That is what you were saying. We do not currently have that proposed, but I, yeah, we could, we could definitely throw that on the plan and, and get that approved by Connecticut DOT on our next round of comments. So that shouldn't, shouldn't be a problem. I understand what you're saying. You don't want someone on Colt Highway going through past the five corner signal and then turning left in. You just, it's easier for them to make the turn, I'm sure at Fineman, but you know. So yes, we can, we, we shouldn't have any problem adding that to the plan. I just wanted to confirm that you meant in both directions. We are not proposing new traffic signals as part of this project and I'm suspecting in her conversations with the town was that, first of all, it's a DOT signal. So town couldn't put a sign up on the mast arm even if they wanted to. But there are many times when we have wanted in all different states, place a sign up on a mast arm for no left turn or yield on green ball or whatever the heck the sign may be. If you do not have the original structural calculations for that, you are not putting a sign up because the wind load on a sign can be heavy. And you could not guarantee that the, that the mast arm could withstand that. That, that wind thing. So we are not proposing new mast arms. So therefore we are not proposing any signage up on the mast arm. That's unfortunate that people are not listening to the no turn on red sign because it's usually due to sight distance or U-turns or whatever it may be. So that's, that's, that's not good, but it's, that's not something that we would be able to take care of with this project. And we are proposing new signal timings at the intersection for all the different movements to balance it. It's because of our impact on the northbound left turn of Fineman, but we don't just change those timings. We balance the whole intersection. And those timings are proposed in our traffic study and being approved by Connecticut DOT. So they may need some sort of signal permit plan or something like that. So even, even though we've received our first comments, we still have a bit of work to do with Connecticut DOT before we get those approvals. I think that is all I have for
That's all I have for traffic. Although sidewalk might under your
Yeah, just to be, we are not proposing any new sidewalks along, along any, that, that's not part of the proposal at this time. So just.
Okay, next was, according to my notes was a suggestion about the privacy Noel. Do you have any thoughts about a privacy Noel engineering management either?
So I can't say definitively no on a privacy Noel. However, my, my big concern is a visit, is a sightline visibility from the Fineman Road driveway towards Colt Highway. We can investigate some alternatives to some additional landscaping in that area. But my, my main concern is based on the elevation difference across the site that providing any sort of Noel, berm, whatever, it would impact visibility of the site. And I would, I would definitely be against that, but you know, if it's a condition of approval to look at some additional landscaping enhancements in their area, you know, we could definitely, you know, look to do that. Right, that, that, that has, that, that's the sightline visibility. Yep. So.
Thank you. I'm going to keep you just close by. There was a question about tweaks and a concern about tweaks and I presume any departure from the plans submitted or the testimony today would raise concern with Ms. Rutherford. So that she would then make a determination whether we'd have to come back before the commission for a public hearing or could come through in a planner's report. Do you have any tweaks contemplated now that are noteworthy?
Yep. So when I said tweaks or changes, again, based on the comment letter that we received from engineering, some of the tweaks or changes would be the retaining wall that's along the back right-hand side. There were some discrepancies between the detail and the plan. I believe our plan showed like a twelve inch dimension where the detail showed eighteen inches. All right, it just, it's just making sure that the detail matches the plan. Another tweak or change would be, like I mentioned earlier, the, the rumble strip at the right and right out, that's going to get larger. There were some questions and comments about the sewer connection, which I alluded to earlier. And making sure that, that, that meets where the existing sewer connection is now. You know, those, those are types of tweaks and changes. Again, the plan, as you see, if we made the changes tomorrow and you looked at the plan today and you compared them to tomorrow, you would have a hard time, aside from the, the rumble strip, you'd probably have a hard time determining what is old and what is new.
I didn't note any other questions to anyone on the team, yes?
One canopy over the, it's one line of pumps.
Yep. So I think there was a comment about the, the pump covers or, so there are five islands. Each of the islands is a raised structure, a three foot by five foot structure, and then your, your pump island sits on top of that. The, if the comment was with regards to the underground few storage tanks, those just have flat covers there. They're slightly raised to make sure that no water gets in the, in the sumps and then ultimately in the, the gas tank. So it's a pretty standard gas station design, pretty standard gas station layout.
It's just a point of color for you. It's one solid canopy over all five.
It is, it is one, one structure. So although it's not a pretty structure out there today, just imagine that much better looking and a lot larger, covering all you can, all your, your islands.
Thank you.
And there was not really a question, but I think a comment about blight. Sir, you'll be pleased to know the town prosecuted a blight claim against the client. There was a hearing conducted. It's been continued, but the town has very much been communicating with this client about concerns of the neighbors. So you should feel very good about your town staff. Made me really unhappy, but you should be pleased with the town staff. So. I don't really have, I don't know of any other questions pending. So. If you want me to wrap it up, I certainly will. Very simple. We comply with section B one and a special permit criterion. You've heard from the neighbors, generally they support it. And I thank my members of the team. They did an excellent job tonight.
Mr. Chair, there was one hand that came up right as
Okay.
Mr. Attorney Hoab was coming up, so I let, I didn't want to derail the train. But there was one hand that came up right at the last minute.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's hear their question or comment.
Mr. Kimball, if you want to unmute your microphone, you can address the commission. Kevin Kimball. You can unmute your microphone and address the commission regarding three forty-two Colt Highway.
Thank you. All my questions have been answered and I'd just like to reiterate the views that were expressed by my fellow residents in Chimney Hill. Thank you and thank you for a nice presentation.
Thank you for taking the time to call in.
Mr. Chair, do you want me to repeat that amazing closing statement that I just did or are you satisfied?
I can't see why we wouldn't want that.
No, I don't think I, I want that on the record, to be honest with you, but I, I don't think we have any further. Scott, anything? No, good. I think we're all good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Does anybody have any, I'm going to leave the hearing open for a little bit while we discuss, but does anybody have any other questions for the applicant at this point? Okay. So Shannon, I'm trying to remember order. Should we do motion second then discussion or does it matter?
You can. So unless, unless there's something specific you need from staff or the applicant, then you can even close and then do a motion second and discuss.
Yeah, I'm not sure I want to close yet, so.
I'm through and just, absolutely. You can do some general discussion and make sure everything's kind of out on the table and then.
So I got the sense there may be some conditions. That were, as we were discussing, Matt, you had asked about hours for delivery. That we might want to put some constraints around that, the noise ordinance. And maybe a completion date. Where's everybody at with those? Thoughts?
I was also, I'm still unclear about the lighting because we're, we talked about the lighting and having it dim, but now it's going to open twenty-four hours. It doesn't seem to apply, but does that impact that area if lights are full for twenty-four hours?
Is that a question?
That's more a question I think for Shannon.
I'm going to try and find the photometrics plan I think is in the set. So going back to my agenda, so sight lighting plan indicates the under canopy lights. So as, so this, this is the photometrics plan, which indicates the light levels of the on the ground reading. So the, what we can see under the canopy is I think a high of fifteen point seven and a low of nine two. Which is fairly standard for what we're seeing for gas stations. So it's not out of the ordinary and understandably there needs to be reasonable light level at the gas pumps for the security and just lighting of the operations and transaction that's taking place, even whether it's nine o'clock in the evening, two o'clock in the morning. Staff had a question, the light levels up against the building are low. It seems that there's no, there is quite a bit of glass, so there will be ambient light that comes through. But there was no lighting shown at the front building mounted lighting. The, the way this photometrics plan was completed and the notes on the plan indicated that the lights are to be dim seventy percent and the pole, the under canopy lights are are run and demonstrate a seventy percent dim. And the pole lights have been dimmed fifty percent in order to meet these light levels. So, and again, this is the plan that's presented, so they would be held to constructing the plan as presented. And those are some of the notes that are towards the bottom of the the plan. And it says lights to be turned off one hour after closing. If they are left on, they are dark sky compliant or they will have to be dark sky compliant, meaning that they're directly down cast. There is nothing that is shining up. And based on the limits that we are seeing, it's at zero foot candles. At the zone line, which is not the property line. So that's the zone. I can bring the aerial map back up again. It's not to say that if you're on Cheryl Drive and it's winter time, right? So the leaves are off the tree. So this comes. So yes, that aerial view shows a mostly deciduous buffer and not evergreen buffer. Whether or not you could get a robust evergreen buffer intermixed within there. Is probably, probably questionable whether or not there's an opportunity for a few additional evergreen trees in there. It's probably yes, but you're not getting thirty more evergreen trees into that area. But this is showing zero at that zone line and at the front property line. So what you're seeing today is what you would expect to see tomorrow. With these lights, if you're standing on Cheryl Drive and looking, you're now looking up, is it like, yes, you are going to see a light head. But it should not be casting light as it's shown here onto Cheryl Drive. You are not going to have illumination onto Cheryl Drive or illumination onto Fineman Road. So I think it's fine as presented. If there's additional building mounted lights that are added during the building permit process. The photometrics plan would be required. And then depending upon what I was seeing, then it would come back to you either other as a site plan modification or under planner's report.
Got you.
So, and Mr. Timola, if you've got anything to add, by all means.
Possibly does.
Yes.
So one, a couple of the comments that we received as part of the engineering were actually to show the light, the any lighting on the building is part of the photometrics plan. So that would be one of the revisions. So we would anticipate minor light levels in front of the building. But as Shannon indicated, it's zero at the zone line. You've got to go through the woods. It's, it's at an elevated point. So if you're standing at Cheryl, you are going to see upwards. So the lighting plan that's shown in the package will be changing by adding the lighting on the building. I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you. Thank you.
So what I've got up on the screen now is the aerial map and I just briefly, I'll turn the, the zone designation off, but just so there's some graphical representation and you can kind of see. So the B one zone is the zone line that we're talking about. And so this is the area. That's the developed line that's shown on the plan. And the BR is the area that's left wooded and not touched. And so you can see if you use a visual reference on Fineman Road, the zone lines just passed where the, uh, I'm going to say a bus is there and it's on Colt Highway, it lines up with the W A on the, uh, on the word highway. So you can see where that blocks out. And it is a mostly deciduous buffer. It is fairly dense. If you were to be out there today, it you're not seeing through. You stand on Cheryl Drive and you're not seeing the buildings. You're not seeing the canopy. You can't. Um, and there is that elevation difference as well. So again, as you're, in, in winter time and you're looking up, yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna see the lights, sure. Um, but it's not actually shining and creating illumination on Cheryl Drive.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Yes.
If I had to comment, I would just, I would actually prefer to see it a little more lit up in front than dimmed down from a law enforcement perspective. You know, it is easy on, easy off access. The darker you have it, the more inviting it is for smashing grabs and, and possible holdups where if you keep it lit up, you're, you're deterring people from coming in, especially if it's a twenty-four hour station. So I, I would prefer to have it a little more illuminated, at least in the front than dimmed down.
Yep. Which I think you'll get when you add the building light.
Yeah. Thoughts on the, yeah, what's in the plan? Yep, exactly.
Okay.
What about the, uh, the restaurant? Right now it's completely open ended. Do we want another bite at the apple? I don't even know if we can get that or check, check off, you know, if it, they want a twenty-four hour or something like that, depending on what the tenant is. Because right now it's kind of open ended to, to the other commissioners. Do you care?
Any thoughts on that?
I, I think that's a fair question. Would, would a restaurant become back in for special permit?
So typically, no. So this is, it's, it's advertised as a quick service restaurant. Um, that's how the public hearing was advertised. And so the use and it was all included in the legal notice. It's included on the drawings. It would not be, so we go, i- it's by use. It's not by tenant. Right? And so the use categories are a, a fast food. So there's a fast food restaurant with and without drive-through or a high turnover, uh, sit-down restaurant. So like your Applebee's, Chili's, whatever that you're in and out in like an hour-ish, hour and a half. So, um, those are the categories that we have both from a zoning standpoint as well as an IT trip generation standpoint. So there really isn't anything else that we would take into, into account. Um, the parking demand is by, again, it's by restaurant. It's by use and by type. It's not by the specific tenant as to whether or not it's Chipotle or Taco Bell or Mo's or Pizza Hut or, uh, a local small pizza place or sub shop. It's, they all fall into the same umbrella.
Any other thoughts on, on that piece of it? Okay. So hours for, uh, fuel delivery? Did we want to send any hours around that? Are we okay leaving it open? I know it came up, so I'm just checking.
Yeah, it was, it was more just a curiosity.
Okay. Yep.
I, I wouldn't even know what, what.
Yeah, it would be very specific. Yep.
You know, I knew we're, we're talking Route six.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sure.
And it knows.
Okay.
So we've done this with some of the, uh, the other gas stations. So, uh, we did allow, uh, from a permitting standpoint, Cumberland Farms is permitted twenty-four hours, seven days a week. It does not currently operate that way.
Yeah.
Um, but there was condition, no deliveries from midnight to five, um, five AM, but they, the residential properties are not as close at Cumberland Farms and same with the Sitco at it's permitted for twenty-four hours, seven days a week with the same limitations on deliveries from, uh, no deliveries between midnight and five. Um, so ten PM probably seems reasonable. Um, from a delivery standpoint.
Okay.
Is that sound? Honestly, the midnight to five thing sounded good.
Well.
Well, just the, the building is also, you gotta remember in between any of the residential and, uh, just because that ten to twelve, the people are still working, you know, we, we still have stuff going on. And obviously after twelve, we're not going to have trucks on the road, but it, but do what you need to do. What do you guys think?
I like the ten PM.
To be more restricted than other businesses in towns.
I mean, it's tough because it's on Route six.
It is a well-traveled
Yeah.
artery.
Right.
And, and that, yes, it calms down at night, but it is also a
Right.
So
Busy.
It is, uh, tends to be a busy space. I, I could see, we could compromise, say eleven. I don't know, you know, or just do the twelve to five.
I think restricting just twelve to five, in my personal opinion, is adequate. And it's in line with the rest of the
Yep.
Gas station.
Stays in line with the rest of town.
Yep. Do want to consistency.
Yeah.
So.
All right, twelve to five it is. Okay. And then the noise ordinance and the vacuums and all that, is that part of the process with the town after this? Or do we need to put it up?
Uh, if it's, if they, so right now there's not a designated location on the site plan.
Yeah.
Unless I've missed it correct, there's not a designation, designated spot on the site plan. So if it gets added in for building permit.
Yep.
I'll have the noise information provided and we'll
Okay.
All the same fun conversations we've had recently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a, yeah, so a little deja vu there. Yep.
At the end of the day, they'll, it will have to comply with the
Okay. Mike?
I just thought of the question. I don't know if Shannon knows or Traffic knows, um, if, is this one of the intersections that the lights turn yellow at like two AM? It just, they just blink or do they still function as timed?
Who's been through there?
Mike had the stumper question.
I think.
You just, I go through there all the time and
I have no idea.
Calls. I think it's a, one of the things I go, it turns yellow at night. It, it doesn't.
Okay, that makes sense.
I just didn't know if that would.
That makes sense.
True thing, so. Okay. That's good to hear. That's what I wanted to make sure of. Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions or conditions they want to discuss? Cause I'm ready to close. We're good with that.
I think just the conservation easement was the only item.
Yeah, I think we probably want to include that, right?
Yeah, I, I think applicant agreed to it.
Agreed to it. Yep.
So I think that's appropriate.
Sounds like you're working up to a motion soon, Matt.
I guess so.
Um, all right, we're good. All right. So I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to say and echo what Mr. Hoab said a little bit, which is it's very rare, I think I'm speaking for all the commissioners, that we get this much public feedback that's actually helpful and positive. So I appreciate the, all the community members, um, that came out today. Um, all right, can we get a, a motion? I did close the hearing, right?
Yep.
Hearing's closed. Okay. I lost track there. Can we get a motion in a second, please?
I would like to make a motion to approve the application for special permit and site plan approval for new fuel station, convenience store, quick service restaurant at three forty-two Colt Highway, B one, BR zones by CPD Properties and three forty-two Colt Highway LLC with the following conditions. Delivery to be restricted to twelve to five.
Uh, outside those. Right, that's the no delivery. No delivery between midnight.
That would be a whole separation, man. Um, additionally, applicant will enter into a conservation easement. And for the photometric plan, can we say as presented?
Uh, yes.
All right, no seconded. Okay. All those in favor? Hold on.
The conditions, so and the items for consideration, so engineering, right, and additions.
Okay.
Engineering memo, right?
Okay, that as well. And additionally, the, the engineering and planning comments shall be addressed to the satisfaction of town staff. A separate sign permit will be required and the site lighting shall be dimmed as noted in the photometric plan as presented.
That work for you, Shannon?
Yes, thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
I opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you. All right, we're going to take like a two-minute break for restroom if anybody needs to.
Good plan. Wow. They did a nice job.
Oh, yeah. There's one over here in the corner.
Oh, I always go.
Reading by such.
Well, like, he's like, that's
Like grabbing those things? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, right, right.
It's like fifteen minutes.
Okay.
So it's a half an hour. Seven, eleven, eleven. You haven't gotten one.
No kidding.
Gotten off so many.
Fifteen minutes.
Gotten off so many.
Number of minutes. Interesting. Funny what he said. All limited to what any you will give you. Ever, ever so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Something called the interconnection.
Right. It's helpful. I've got another one that I'm going to make it.
I was just going to say, I don't remember the words.
I don't know. Right, yeah. Yeah.
So. But we'll, we'll, we'll hit those. Solar battery.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
Interconnect. It's like lines in between the substation and the
How's your recovery coming, man?
Right. We're talking about New York and Denver.
Oh, my God.
It's a business to be in.
Everything is the last.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
I'll have to cut it straight. Feel down. So it's taken down and I'm not getting on either, so it's taken down.
Well, that's right. Right. So it's also the therapist that likes it.
They did, they do some of that, but as soon as I say that, I'm kind of like back off a little bit.
I know.
Today, for the first time, I did that on the bike, like one all the way around and stuff. That was, that was fun, you know? All the way around. Well, it's like, I'm going to punch you on this for eight minutes. Five minutes or much, it really like portion, try to get over the top of it. Uh, we had all, and I, I got it to go at twenty seconds.
Oh.
I got a little like tickle up. I probably couldn't do it.
Yeah.
I'll also see you. Oh, that's good.
And then exercises at home.
That's good.
All right, let's get the show on the road.
Yeah, exactly. But that didn't clear up.
We were so long.
We're so close.
All right. Meeting is back to order. Uh, so our third public hearing, uh, Farmington West Estates, uh, LTD application for ten lot subdivision of Governor's Pride off Snowberry Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman James Diogus, one oh four Bellevue Avenue for the applicant. As the commission will recall, we were here, uh, probably four weeks ago now, uh, and made a lengthy presentation with respect to our proposal for the ten lot subdivision, uh, off of Snowberry, uh, Lane. The, uh, at the time that, uh, we were here, we had received comments from the town staff and we had replied to the comments and submitted them. And admittedly, there wasn't enough time for the town to, uh, review them uh, and to, uh, give us responses back. So the meeting was continued. Uh, we met with the town staff on two different occasions. We submitted revised plans. And we're here tonight, uh, to ask for a final approval uh, based upon the revisions that were requested by the town and our responses to that. Uh, we, we did file a, a response in writing, uh, which, uh, Shannon has. And we've addressed each and every concern, uh, that the town staff had. There were a couple of questions regarding stormwater, uh, drainage detention, et cetera. Andrew was on vacation two weeks ago, so he's here today and I'm going to ask him to address that. And then if you want me to go through the comments, I can certainly do that, but unless there's something that Shannon feels that we should address uh, in the comments, I think I'll just let it stand that they have been responded to, uh, and, uh, the plans have been revised accordingly. So, Andrew.
Good evening, Chair, Commission members. My name is Andrew Quirk, professional engineer in principle with Kratz, Jones and Associates. Uh, yeah, I did have several conversations with Bruce Seer regarding the comments. And, uh, not to speak from him, but from what I gathered from, uh, reviewing the comments of, um, most importance to him in terms of the stormwater were the comments thirty through thirty-two that you have. And, uh, I did, um, address those and have correspondence. I don't know if that's included in the packages or not. But, um, I'll just review those. I think the other comments were really just more, more housekeeping in nature. Um, and even these, uh, generally are, but he, he, I think his primary concern is that these would have a ripple effect that would change something on the application. But comment thirty, um, relates to, uh, with the series of revisions, the stormwater report showed a different slope than what was on the plans. We corrected that and it doesn't have a material effect on the computations because the outlet is controlled at the face of the outlet control structure. The, the outlet pipe itself uh, is after that control point. So changing the slope didn't have a material impact on the, the numbers. So everything we said previously in terms of uh, attenuation of peak flows and all of that remains the same. Uh, for thirty-one, um, there was some clarification of the areas, um, uh, for the wetland area, just up gradient of Snowberry Lane. Um, part of the analysis was to see what impact that might have with the changes, uh, in stormwater flowing through that area, if it would have a negative impact on the adjoining properties. We did that analysis, but there was some question as to those areas. We had gone out there and done additional field topography, verified the elevations. We updated that and we had come to an agreement, um, or an understanding that it would be best to have a berm installed to provide the typical standard is twelve inches of freeboard above what's computed for a high elevation so that you have a safety factor. And so the plans now show that twelve inches of freeboard uh, achieved in the construction of a berm to ensure that it will be channeled down through the area down to Snowberry Lane. And that satisfied, uh, that comment. And then thirty-two was really, uh, just to ensure we're providing a lot of storage for the roof water runoff through the dry wells. Um, and, um, just concerns that that's a necessary part of the stormwater management plan. So just being very clear that those need to be constructed and installed because the stormwater management numbers and everything else are dependent upon those being installed and we, we agree. Um, there were some questions as to the, the numbers that were used and the capacity, and it is true that we are, we're showing a lot of storage on each individual lot, trying to capture that roof water and store it immediately and not have runoff, uh, to the stormwater basins, but retain that water. And that's the intent and that's what's shown on the plans and we, we agree on that. Um, the other comments, um, again, I think are more housekeeping in nature. If there are any questions, we can try to address those, but I, I, I think, uh, we felt that the comments were sufficiently addressed if town staff agrees.
Shannon, uh, is there anything from your end in terms of the comments that you feel we need to, uh, need to address? I, I, I think we responded to everything.
So the, the last set of comments dated was June twenty-sixth. That was posted to the website and then at the end of last week, we received updated plans. Um, Mr. Seer and myself had an opportunity to review the response to comments today. First took a much deeper look at it than I did, but, uh, we both went through the response and the The response and, yes, the, the item of most concern and was noted on the comment that, uh. Additional review was recommended, but it was specifically related to comment thirty-one, which was the wetland D that, uh. Uh, Andrew just discussed and correct, there's. Most of the comments have been addressed from the June twenty-sixth memo, and certainly the item of concern. Uh, has been addressed satisfactorily.
Great.
So in terms of the public presentation, uh, that concludes, uh, our, our part of it. Uh, again, we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay.
There was, so there was an email from.
Yeah.
June twenty-first. With, uh, comments, so public comment from the homeowners association. So that. I presume your team is prepared to. That had been shared with you, so it'd be nice to have that addressed on the record.
Sure. Um, we, we had received, uh. A letter from the association's attorney who I had dealt with previously. And, uh, the, the question was raised about, uh, two additional detention basins on this development. Um, and they were not originally on the plan back in nineteen ninety-seven or something along those lines, and. And her and I talked about the fact that the, um. Zero increase runoff concept, uh, was not in place back then to the extent that it's being applied today. Uh, consequently, uh, we had to, as a result of our wetlands application, create a, a system that was going to protect. Uh, the water quality basin and the rest of the development. Uh, she had asked me regarding maintenance, and she had asked me a question regarding the longevity of the remainder portion of this development. Uh, in talking with Steve Barberino, we. We guesstimated, uh, that we might be able to move ten houses a year. Uh, there's fifty-seven houses left, so we're looking at a five-year, five-and-a-half-year project, depending upon how the economy moves. And, uh, I indicated to. Uh, Casey, uh, who's the attorney, uh, that we would be in control of both detention systems during the interim period, so for the five-and-a-half years that we're in the development. Side of this thing, we're gonna be responsible for the long-term maintenance during that five-and-a-half-year period. Uh, and, uh, the burden is on Mr. Barberino and his staff to make sure that they're functioning as they're designed. After five-and-a-half years, uh, they will be turned over to the association, and the association will then be responsible for its long-term management. Which is similar to what we did with the water quality basin, which is the first basin in this project that was built, uh, some years ago. In the interim, we've managed that water quality basement, basement. Basin, and we've had a cost effect of about fifteen hundred dollars a year, uh, in terms of mowing and in terms of, um. Uh, inspections. So I, I told the attorney that, you know, down the road, the association can expect. That, uh, fifteen hundred dollars per basin would be the yearly cost of maintenance. Uh, there would be an inspection done, uh, every number of years by an engineer, and that report would be filed with the town of Farmington and with the association. That translated into. About three dollars a month per unit, hundred and fifty-seven units, and that would maintain those basins, uh, over its, over its lifespan. So anyway, uh, that was our discussion, I have put together. A plan for the maintenance of the, uh, of the two systems. I, uh, I have not provided this to, to Kay, uh, to Casey, to, uh. Shannon yet, uh, but it basically mirrors the prior maintenance plan that we had when we developed the earlier phases, so.
Thank you.
In, in terms of the cost of the maintenance, that's, it's not really a planning and zoning issue, that's more of a, uh, a declarant, uh, purchaser's issue, but. Just for the sake of the discussion, those are the numbers that we're looking at. And again, uh, the estimate is five-and-a-half years in terms of our control of it, and then it would be turned over. Questions?
Matt?
Uh. No, I'm all set, thank you.
Uh, all set. Rosie?
All set, thank you.
Just a question, you, you were also, um, requesting a, um.
Uh, waiver.
A waiver.
Yes.
Is the word I was looking for, thank you. And that has to do with the incline or the.
At the intersection of Governor's Pride and Snowberry. And I believe the DEP director had. Expressed an opinion that he did not object to it, uh, and that request waiver was put in writing to you from, from me. Uh, and we had, we brought that up at the last meeting, and I think the canvas or the consensus of the commission was that that waiver was not a problem, but it does need a separate vote.
Okay, so that is still on the table?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I'm glad to hear that you've been able to. Give the HOA some, some numbers to work with and, and timeline. I know it's estimates, but they, they were operating in the dark, so I, I appreciate you.
Yep.
Giving something, um, and hopefully that allays some of their fears. Um, okay, that's it, thank you.
Abe?
Actually, my question's more for Shannon, it's when I wrote him an email. Uh, before, is, how much do we, uh, should we be considering HOA fees?
Uh.
On projects like this?
Probably, it, it's, it's not really applicable, so again, so, and. To a certain extent, it is offset with the new homes, right? So i- it's not that the existing HOA is taking all the burden of new development, it's also being shared. Per Reta on the. New homes that are offset a portion of that cost, so it'll be presumably a commensurate. Spread of the, uh, of the pricing, but. It, it's, it's not really, um, a consideration, the, the stormwater. Management elements have to be installed in order to manage the. The runoff from the projected properties.
Right.
Great, thank you.
Certainly.
And Bruce?
Um, I was not at the original meeting, but I did watch the video and I read all the documents, and despite that, I have no questions.
Appreciate, appreciate that, though, Mike?
I guess my question's for you, Shannon, um, is town okay with the, the grade, I remember, I think in the original meeting, there was already a. Waiver previously for the grade and.
So they, the client has changed, the applicant has changed the profile, uh, since then.
Yes.
So. So the initial, the. The waiver's still needed, but there were two. There were two grades, um. Let me bring up the plan, a plan's gonna be a picture's worth of a thousand words, in this case, it's, uh. See how well this loads up. You wanna, I'm just gonna.
I, I think in summary, the component of the intersection design. That staff, uh, had most concerns with in terms of the safety between the two curves. We adjusted that to, to meet what staff. Uh, to meet staff's recommendations, so the waiver now is only for. The. The, the, yeah, the requirement is two percent with a waiver up to four percent. And we are at three percent, so we're within the listed waiver. Range within your regulations, but it does require a waiver.
Correct.
That, that meets standards as, as well, eight percent is the max.
Right, the concern was the vertical curve, so they. So this three percent that is in the lower left of the plan. Is the percent of the road coming into, of Governor's Pride coming into Snowberry. Right, so that's typically, we wanna see two percent, but is, uh, noted. With a waiver, we can go up to four percent, so that waiver's still. Um, required. The original plan, this vertical curve. Was much narrower. So it was creating from the eight to three percent. A much sharper transition between the two slopes. And there was concern with things like, uh, buses or a fire truck. That there was gonna be difficulty maneuvering the sharpness of that vertical curve. So this redesign has smoothed out that transition. So it's a longer transition than from the three to the eight percent. Um, you'll see that this tangent portion of the eight percent is quite narrow. Um, before you then are into the, uh, the other curve coming up into the, the hill. So that was the, the issue, and the, the applicant is taking care of that by smoothing out that vertical curve for us as requested. But the waiver is still needed for the three percent.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Good, all set.
All right. I don't think I have any questions at this time, but thank you. So it's a public hearing, we don't have anybody left in the room, so probably online.
So I will ask if anyone has called on, uh, to offer comment on the Governor's Pride application, uh, for Snowberry Cobble, specifically Farmington West Estates Limited Partnership for a ten lot subdivision. On Governor's Pride. If anyone's called in, please raise your hands using the feature in Zoom, you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone has called in to offer comment regarding. The Farmington West Estates Limited Partnership Application for Ten Lot Subdivision of Governor's Pride. Please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Any remaining questions for the applicant for? Okay, any final comments? All set?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's late. Daydreaming, uh, no, I'm, I'm, we're all good.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Shannon, we need to do two, two separate motions, one for the waiver and one for the overall application, is that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Or matter, or we can do them in either?
Um, typically, I would say do the subdivision, so it's approval of subdivision and.
Okay. All right.
Second, the waiver requires the five-six.
So can we get a motion and a second for the?
Do we need to close?
I, I need to close the public hearing, I just closed the public hearing. Officially close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion. To approve the application for a ten lot subdivision of Governor's Pride off Snowberry Lane. Phase six A, AH zone, Farmington West Estates Limited Partners.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And the waiver, a motion and a second, please.
Like to make a motion to approve the waiver from section four point eight. Point three of subdivision regulations. Requesting to increase the initial roadway grade from two percent to three percent. For Farmington West, uh, so, Estates Limited Partners. Of Governor's Pride off Snowberry Lane. AH zone.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, Shannon?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, I've got two planner report items. That hopefully should be. Easy or easy-ish. Uh, the first one is the Tuxus Me Concession Stand.
Hmm.
Um, the town's proposing to renovate the existing concession, concession stand at Tuxus Me, the scope of work includes. Replacement of, uh, boards and sheathing due to water damage, new roof, uh, portion of the concrete. Uh, the concrete portion of the building will be cleaned and repointed and repainted and sealed. New gutters and roof leaders will be installed, new stairs from the second floor. Uh, to be. Installed that are code compliant, they are not now. A portion of the bituminous is being replaced with concrete, not all of it. And a, a full access around the building is being provided. Um. So that's what they are looking to do. The footprint is staying, it's just, um. I guess some major-ish notable renovations, most of it building-related, but there was enough that was. Site-related with some of the bituminous being replaced, the stairwell. And pathway around the building that I thought at least warranted bringing to your attention. Um, unless there's a concern, I'll just continue to address this at the staff level under. Uh, and at the building permit review, so. There's some grading that's being done, but just to keep water away from the building.
Makes sense.
All good, lots of nods, so we will continue at the staff level. All right, the next item has to do with. A sign that really should be easier than it has been.
Just by there, my way here.
This sign is, uh, located at seven seventy-one Farmington Avenue.
Oh.
Uh, you may be familiar with this building, uh, next to, uh, the lovely Vivid Hugh building.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm part of Brick Walk Shops, so. It is part of the Farmington Center Zone, so it requires ADRC review. It is also in the Historic District, so it requires review and approval with the Farmington Historic District. So assuming that I can. Convince. The applicant that the word vinyl should not appear on any portion of their application. Uh, it will proceed with both of those entities. Um, and I'm going to, the request is that, assuming that they can satisfactorily. Uh, meet ADRC and Farmington Historic District requirements. And that it is sized appropriately per our regulations, which it is, uh, as shown on the graphic. Uh, that it does not require further review and permitting with the TPZ, I was gonna try to avoid having three formal review processes. For this. Sign to go on to the dentist office, but, um, we're trying desperately to get rid of the word vinyl, so.
I don't think we need to complicate that process for further.
We got closer today, so. I'm hopeful.
Vinyl is, is a four-letter word when it goes to those two.
Go forth.
Staff level and building permit level, that was it, it was just those two.
Okay.
Two items.
Thanks, Shannon, any, anybody have any questions or anything?
One quickie. Uh, midpoint.
Yes.
Anything happening, I know it was kind of lost in probate limbo and things like that.
Um, that is not, um. That situation is not going to improve anytime soon, unfortunately, uh, Abe Coyote passed, uh, week. To ten days ago.
I'm sorry?
Abe Coyote passed.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, I saw that, yeah.
So.
Oh, okay.
I wanna say roughly a week-ish, week to ten days ago, so, um. No, I don't believe we will see any activity on the midpoint development project for. Unnotable amount of time at this particular point.
And what's their, their timeframe, I've, isn't?
Uh, in order to, I'd have to go back and take a look, and I think. We got caught in some of the COVID timing, so.
I just remember, because it was coming, it was one of the very first things.
Quite possibly be fourteen years, so at this point, so depending upon. Where it fell with the COVID time, so we can take a look.
I, I was just curious.
Now, it's worth noting, because I'd wanna make sure that, that, there's a lot of time and effort on everybody's part.
Yeah.
That was.
Any approvals to lapse, but I think we've got a little bit of time.
Yeah.
Okay.
But duly noted, we'll check the timing of that.
Okay, and then I just saw Starbucks is getting all dug up and.
They are well underway.
Naples is getting dug up.
Naples today.
So all the, all the vegetables are getting dug up, so, but, uh, it's gonna be. Very, uh, hot and heavy for six weeks, and then.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it should look. Really, it should be a really notable change.
That's.
Really commendable, the effort they're putting in.
The, um. The feeling in my family was it'll look much better. But my husband will just have to go through withdrawals and figure out where to get his coffee every morning when Starbucks is closed.
Challenge, yeah.
Getting a little. Rebel dog.
Wanted Bristol when he.
Yeah, but he, 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 he just goes right by the.
Yeah, that's true.
That's the problem.
So, uh, well, he'll figure it out.
All right, can we get a motion to approve, and second, to approve the minutes of the June tenth meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June tenth, twenty twenty-four. Planning and zoning commission meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.